I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings and thank you for all coming this evening, even those out in TV land. They'll get to see it starting tomorrow. Okay, our first person visitor is Robin, Executive Director of the Addison County Economic Development Corporation. We've asked her to come and share some words of wisdom with us tonight. The economy is on the way up, right Robin?
That's right. Where would you like me to?
Anywhere. You can stand right up or if you want to come around the front, wherever you're comfortable.
If you want to sit up here, I can...
Can I sit somewhere?
Thanks.
You don't have to feel uncomfortable.
You can sit to the corner.
We don't want to put anybody on the hot seat.
Yeah, so this is the official hot seat here tonight. Great. Thank you so much for asking me to come and I'm delighted to be here. So I run the Addison County Economic Development Corporation and we work with businesses to help them navigate the challenges and opportunities of doing business in Addison County in Vermont. And we focus primarily on businesses that do value-added and manufacturing kinds of work. We have other organizations in the county that work with other kinds of businesses. So for example, you have the Virgin's Partnership which works with your downtown businesses and then the Chamber of Commerce works with other retail and hospitality and tourism kinds of things. So everybody has their place and we're all here with a common goal of trying to make life better for the citizens of Addison County. We just do it in different ways. So I believe Mel is on our board, we know that, he has a permanent seat on our board. And at least once a year, he asks me for an update of what we've been up to and I think you've handed that out already because I did that back at the end of March. It wasn't for tonight, but you gave it...
That was probably your nine-month...
Nine months.
That went before a number of months ago, right?
Right, right. So I'm not going to go over all of that again, but I'll give you some highlights for what's been happening and some of the things that we're doing and then I actually do have handouts to leave you with. So I don't know how much time I think I should speak now, I just don't want to overstay my welcome.
Ten minutes, twelve minutes?
Okay, great. So we get our funding from the state of Vermont, from the general fund. We get some grant funding. We house the Small Business Development Center in our office as well and they... So they give us a grant to cover their costs, some of their costs in our office. And then we get some money for fee for service activities that we do, such as revolving loan funds that we work with businesses. I'll talk about that in a minute. And then we also get some of our revenue from membership, which is cities in town. So I'd like to thank the city of Virgin's very much for contributing, being a member of our organization, as well as businesses in Addison County. So that's where our funding comes from to do things that we try to do. I have a very small staff. Right now, it's one and a half people, me and a part-timer and we're in the midst of hiring another part-timer. We've had two part-timers in the past, but we've changed the position and what we really need with the work that we're trying to do going forward to really be a resource and support our businesses more effectively. We're hiring a part-time marketing communications events coordinator because we're doing a lot more in that area and I can't do all that as one person. So we're about to make an offer. We had a great many applicants, a huge range of people and we have three really, really great choices. So I know a little something to say about that. I think we're being effective. Last year, we increased our membership by more than 50% over what it's ever been before in terms of dollars, yeah, which is quite amazing. And we increased, we had about 20 new members too. We went from about 46 to about 65 members, which is a big increase for us as well. So I think people are seeing, businesses are seeing that we provide some value to them and I know it's worthwhile to be a member of our organization. As I mentioned before, we operate revolving loan funds. I have a number of loan funds that I get through the USDA Rural Development. And our role is to do what sometimes is called gap financing or the last dollar in. When a company perhaps, for example, needs to do some leasehold improvements or they want to expand and buy more equipment so that they can grow and add some jobs and let's say that it's, you know, $200,000 worth of equipment and the bank says, "Well, we don't want to, we don't lend 100% of the value of the collateral. We'll lend 50%, so we'll lend you $100,000." And we want you to put in some money too, you know, it's the $20,000 and then we might lend the other $80,000. So our rules are basically that we'll do up to 40% of a project, up to $100,000. And we are really looking at job creation and the loans end up really being sort of character loans as opposed to collateral loans because we're behind the banks and we're behind other lending institutions. But it's a great way for businesses to get the boost that they need when they can't get the kind of loans that they need. And I know that you have, Mel, you have your own...
We know that feeling, the last dollar in feeling.
The last dollar in, right. You're not doing, you're not thinking about the collateral, you're thinking about the character of the owner and the quality of the business itself.
Well, we actually rely on the bank because if the bank is willing to lend X, you know, we feel pretty good about X plus a part of X. And I think that that's the same way with the economic corporation. Maybe you could speak about how much money the revolving, your revolving loan fund is very different from ours in the amount of money that you deal with.
Well, our original loans, because they're from the USDA, we actually borrow the money and we pay it back at an interest rate of 1% over 30 years. And it's revolving because as the money comes back in, we can relend it out again because the interest starts to cover and grow. So one of our revolving loan funds, we have three from the USDA. Two of them are for half a million dollars each. We've gotten them at different times. And then the third one, we just got, we actually closed on earlier this year, is about $162,000, which is kind of a weird number. What was the entire allocation for the state of Vermont? The USDA asked us to apply because they liked the way we run our little portfolio. We run a pretty big little portfolio. So the first one for $500,000, we got in 1998. My predecessor got that. And we've lent almost $2 million through that half a million dollar loan. So as money comes back and it gets paid, so it depends. We've just made a couple of loans recently, one for $40,000 and another one for $100,000 and so we have a little bit less. We still have a few hundred thousand left to give out. We usually have things coming in, so we pretty much always have money to lend. I'd love to be totally filled up, but it's always nice to have money with people. I don't know if that answers what you thought I was going to say, but anyway. Because we're the last dollar in, our interest rates are higher than they would be at a bank. We also, you know, we work with the local banks in Addison County, predominantly the National Bank of Middlebury and Peoples have been where we've had the best relationships. And then we work a lot with VITA, which is the Vermont Economic Development. They're based in Montpelier, but they just opened a satellite office in Middlebury in our building. In fact, I helped get them into our building. So it's wonderful. We have a nice little sort of small business, help businesses grow group of organizations because the Small Business Development Center is in my office where they are and VITA is there now too. So we really have a lot of resources that are right here in Addison County that we can bring to help our businesses. And we work a lot with businesses in Virgin's. When I sent the nine-month report, I tried to connect what we're doing with Virgin's and who in Virgin's is on our board. We have a lot of Virgin's people on our board. I actually don't think we have anybody who lives in Middlebury on our board. I live in Middlebury, I'm the only one. Yeah, it's really interesting.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, so we have, we have a lot of Virgin's either residents or people that are employed. So somebody from Country Home Products is on our board, the CFO, Chris Knapp. So in addition to Mel, who obviously is on our board. And then Joel Melnick, who's with Nathaniel Group, is on our board. Darcy Tardle's in Wallfam, but that's sort of like Virgin's kind of maybe. At Peoples Bank is here. And Sarah Cowan, who does live in Virgin's and works for the National Bank of Middlebury. So we have quite a good representation from Virgin's, which is really helpful for me because as I work with the larger employment centers, which you are one, it's helpful for me to have both businesses and local residents that can talk to me about what's going on. So I've been talking with Sarah Cowan, for example, about the Childscares Center. And I connected her with somebody at the USDA because they do special loans for community facilities and there may be some grant opportunities there too. So when I know, I can help. And that's what's really helpful about having folks from... I also work on getting grants for businesses for various things. The longer I'm in this job, I think the better I get at figuring out ways to find money for people. So I've gotten, again, the USDA is one of our best partners, a couple of grants from them to do some feasibility studies for a food processing and storage organization company in Shoreham. And then I got a grant to do some, and I'm going to give you an article about this in a minute, an economic gardening grant for four specific businesses in Addison County and I'll explain what that means in a minute. And I was able to get a grant from the state to do five more businesses and that's what's the one that's about to come out once I get this thing signed. And I'll have a lot more leeway on the second grant. Sometimes when you work with the USDA, any organization has their limitations on the size of business you could work with or the type of business, what their profitability is or number of employees. And the USDA very much limited me on this first economic gardening grant. On the second one, I have a lot more leeway. So there were a number of companies that I talked to who were very interested in participating, but they didn't qualify as what the USDA calls a small and emergent business. They have a narrower definition than SBA has. So economic gardening is basically grow your own. That's what it means. It's both a philosophy and a tool. And the philosophy is that, and the data supports this, that job creation happens with local businesses, businesses that are, you know, the residents of Vermont, not without estate ownership by and large. And that those companies that are moving from what we call stage one, two to nine employees, to stage two, 10 to nine end employees, are where the big growth happens. And if you can help businesses get from that stage one to stage two size, then they're really going. And, you know, businesses that start up can get so far and then they often plateau in that smaller size and it's really hard to make the next leap up. They need access to data and market research and a number of other things. And the business changes as it gets bigger and the entrepreneur, who was the, you know, very entrepreneurial and had the idea person, now is running a business and has employees reporting to him or her. And it's not the same job as that they started with. So there maybe needs to be different management. So the tool is a highly sophisticated technical assistance tool with a trained national strategic research team to provide the kind of assistance and research specific to an individual business. And the term economic gardening started in 1989 in Middleton, Colorado by sort of a colleague of mine many years ago, who was, who started this out there and grew the tax base and grew employment without any tax incentives or other funny things. They did it by really giving the businesses the customized technical assistance they needed to grow and access to those resources. There's now a national center for economic gardening that's housed at the Edward Lowe Foundation, who I've been connected with. And so this economic gardening grant that I got is the first in Vermont and the first in the Northeast. It's being used in 41 states across the country and I've been trying to get the state of Vermont to do this. And they're moving, they're interested, but they're moving at the speed of government. And I wasn't going to wait, so I was able to get this grant. And then the second one that I'm getting, I'll be able to go to more businesses to do this. So I have, I have an article that was in the Addison Independent just a couple of weeks ago. We were above the fall in the front page of the Addison Independent and it says, "Four Local Companies Plow Into Economic Gardening." John Flowers interviewed me for about an hour. So it'll give you a good flavor of what it's about. The other thing that we're doing, we're really trying to think about what businesses need and be a resource for them in a number of different ways. And we're holding various conferences. We held a conference called Financing the Working Landscape for agriculture, farms, value-added agriculture, forest products, forestry things. Last year in Addison County with Acorn Group and Addison County Regional Planning, we had 130 people come. The Secretary of the Agency of Agriculture, Chuck Ross, was our lunchtime speaker. People loved it and they wanted more. And they also connected with one another. And so we're having our second one this year. It's going to be November 29. And Mel will certainly hear more about it. And I'll get all the rest of your addresses. I'll send it out so you'll just know about it. And we're very excited about being able to do that again. So that's one thing we're doing. Our board, three members of our board and I, over the last year, have looked at, what are the other things that businesses need that we can provide perhaps on maybe a fee-for-service basis and what are some more things we can do if you're a member? And so we're completely revamping our website and we're going to allow businesses to post, who are members, to put job postings up on our website. They can post commercial property, you know, no extra cost for doing this sort of thing. Each member's going to have its own webpage, which will then link to their own website as well, but it's another place that they can advertise. We'll be featuring the business on our front page. We'll be able to take payments for membership and registration fees for events that we have. We plan on hold organizing some small business roundtables. We've heard from smaller businesses that would like to be even other CEOs because they get kind of isolated and they'd like to chat with one another and talk about life and problems because they tend to be sharing similar issues even through different businesses. We've even talked about having a business book group and having somebody come in, you know, reading a business book and having maybe the author or somebody else come in and facilitate. So there's a lot of things that we're looking to do to support our businesses, which is why we're hiring this marketing communications events coordinator because I can't do all that and we're going to have somebody that's going to help us out.
When are they going to start? Do you have an idea, hopefully?
Middle to end of September. I plan to make an offer this week or next. I'm going to go on vacation the first two weeks of September and everybody I've talked to will be ready to start. So you will hear more about that.
I'm sure.
And then the other thing I just want to mention before I hand out these things and be quiet is that I started this thing called the Addison County Development Cabinet about a year and a half ago. And it includes the countywide and local organizations working together to talk about issues and talk about what we're doing and figure out ways to collaborate on things. Again, goal being make lives better for the citizens of Addison County. So it includes the three downtown groups, the Virgin's Partnership. Tara came to the last one.
Okay, good.
She wasn't able to make it today. I'm not sure I have her email actually, but...
I guarantee you.
That would be great. And then Bristol and Middlebury, the three downtown groups, the Department of Labor, Regional Planning, the Chamber of Commerce, my organization, the United Way, the Workforce Investment Board, Small Business Development Center. And we get together and we meet once a month for about an hour and a half. And we, oh, and the Career Center, Lynn Cole was there this morning. So every time we get together, connections are made, new ideas come out. It's like, "Oh, you're doing that. I'd like to do that too." Or maybe we could do this thing together. So it's been a really nice way to, you know, we don't have a county government, so we've created this to really work together and see what we can do to help our local communities. So that's a lot of what we're up to. And I'm going to hand out two things. This is the article that was in the Independent. So that will give you the economic gardening. And then one of the things that the board is going to just bring us here. This is a new folder that talks about the services we provide for free to everybody, what you get for membership and what is fee for service, so you can have a sense of what we're about. We also put together a brochure talking about our revolving loan funds in the Small Business Development Center. My card's in there. And, yeah, so would you like to read those?
I have two more, if anything.
Why not? So I can give you...
We have plenty.
Okay, okay, great. So I'll leave this with you so that you know we've got, if you need help, you know, we're a resource. We'll do a lot of things ourselves, but I will also connect you with other businesses, with state and local resources, with federal resources. And if we don't know who it is, we'll figure it out. We can, we have enough connections so we can figure out where you need to go for help for just about anything. And we get all kinds of different calls. It's fascinating. I guess I'll be one of those people who say, "One, someday I'll write a book," right? But it's a great job. I love it. I love working in this community and this county.
How many years have you been in that position? I should know, but I can't remember.
It's okay. I started in November of 2008, so right after the crash and the day before the president was elected. So it's been interesting times.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions of Robin that they'd like to ask?
Thank you.
If not, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking your time out of your very busy schedule.
I'm happy to come anytime. So please, and if there's anything in particular that you want me to come for, just let me know.
We will have Mr. Mel notify you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next visitor is Cheryl Brinkman, Chair, Board of Supervisors, Addison County Solid Waste Management District.
It is a mouthful.
Yeah.
Yeah. The last time I came before this council with a solid waste ban, it was to tell you about the electronic recycling guidelines that came out last year. It's called Vermont Cycles. And I just wanted to quickly tell you how very successful that program has been. One of the goals that the state set for the electronic recycling program, their goal was to have 3.4 million pounds of electronics collected within the first year and in six months, they collected 2.6 million. So they, they almost made their goal in the first six months. I don't know where it's at right now, but it's a very successful program. Keeps electronics out of the landfill. I probably should...
You probably know what is collected and not collected at our transfer station, but I'll definitely get that information. It's probably posted somewhere in the town clerk.
This was very successful, but what was not as successful was the rest of the recycling program for the state of Vermont. I believe they were really stuck at about 30% diversion of recyclable materials into the landfill statewide. There are some parts of the state that recycle better than others and I am extremely proud and happy to tell you that Addison County recycles probably more than any other county in the state. And we have actually passed the 50% diversion law. So we're, I think we're the only ones in the state that have passed a 50% diversion. But to that goal, the Vermont Solid Waste Bill that is now the Vermont Solid Waste to Law was an act relating to establishing universal recycling of solid waste essentially. It's been worked on for a couple of years and it just passed the last, at the end of the last legislative session, it was signed into law. So I thought I would take this 116-page bill and then condense it down to the summary of highlights, which I have from A&R, Agency of Natural Resources, and Terry, our general manager at the transfer station. And I made a one-page summary for you. And I thought that I could just go over that with you tonight. And I just took the highlights that I thought pertained mostly to municipalities and the deadlines and where that may interest you. And because our audience doesn't have the handout that was in your packet, I'll just briefly go over some of this. So the highlights of the Vermont Solid Waste Law. The goal was to improve the rate of diverting valuable materials from landfills. Several requirements include mandatory recycling and banned disposal from landfills. So of the many aspects of this bill, I think one of the main, the most important thing are the collection requirements and the timelines that we have to make these collection requirements. So the mandatory recyclables are the ones that you're familiar with. You turn over the container and it has a recycling thing. It says 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 up through 9, I think. Those are, have to be collected by 2014 and they're banned from the landfills in 2015. And that fall, and then the next year, we're going to, we're going to start banning leaf and yard waste and clean wood. And then we're following that with food residuals or organics, as some people call them. By, an absolute banning is 2020. But there's a tiered ban for large producers of organics. The mandatory timelines for food residual recycling is down here. 2014 is the timeline for very large producers of food residuals, more than 104 tons per year. And that would be a very large grocery store chain like Hannaford. So they, they're going to be required to start doing something with their food residuals much sooner than individuals. And that scales all the way up until 2020, which is the timeline for any person who generates any amount of food residuals. Will need to do something else with that food residual and not just put it in the trash. There are some guidelines for that. There's a food residual organic management hierarchy, which is primarily reduction at the source. That makes sense. Diversion for food consumption for people, such as giving food to food banks and places that can distribute food for needier folks. Diversion for consumption for animals and agricultural uses. Then composting, land application, digestion, and finally, energy recovery. If you can incinerate it, you can actually, you know, get some energy from that. So those are the suggestions for managing food residuals. The curbside haulers are going to have the same requirements. Basically, any individual, any hauler that will come and take up trash, they are required also to collect recyclables by 2015. They're also not allowed to charge a separate fee for that. This is something that is supposed to be a cheaper way to go, is to recycle materials. And so they can charge a fee for their total service, trash and recycling. They can't charge a separate fee just for recycling. Leaf and yard waste by 2016 and then food residuals by 2017. Is a requirement for haulers to take food residuals away by 2017. One of the most interesting things, and I think this is where, you know, we can all start doing things before we're required, is the parallel collection of recyclables in public spaces. Recycling containers are to be provided and located in publicly owned places, municipal and state, where trash containers are located by 2015. They do exempt bathrooms. That's understandable. And the State House was required to implement a similar program by a month ago. So the State House actually had to do something to provide recycling next to their trash, trash containers. Municipalities are also required to implement variable rate pricing for municipal solid waste from a residential customer based on volume or weight of the trash collected by 2015. But the piece about putting recycled containers out where trash containers are is the thing that I like the best because people do want to recycle. And you often are downtown, not necessarily here, anywhere downtown and you've got a water bottle and you want to recycle it, but there's no place to recycle it. So you end up taking it back home with you or say the heck with it, goes in the trash. So I really think that piece is important. It's not required until 2015, but I think most people do want to recycle. And if you have an option, if you have trash and recycling right next to each other, that's the best way to do it because then people have choice and most people do want to recycle. That might have been a lot, so let me know if you have some questions or some clarify, yeah, if I can clarify any of that.
In the first group where it says mandatory recyclables by 2014 at collection facilities...
Yep. Would that be like the transfer station?
That's what a collection facility is.
A place, yep.
So the Addison Solid Waste District Collection Facility...
Yep.
Would no longer be accepting leaf and yard waste. Is that what that's saying?
After, no, we can collect it at the transfer station. It just can't go into the landfill.
Okay.
But the transfer station is currently collecting that, that material anyway. It just means that that can't go into the landfill, so something else is done with that. Clean wood is mulched up and then you can buy that. You can put it anywhere you need mulch. That, that's already being handled now down at our transfer station. But it, it means that it can't go to a landfill.
So I guess, I'm just trying to understand, is this saying that this transfer station has to take recyclables, but they can't go to the landfill? So that's what this is saying. The transfer station has to take leaf and yard waste that can't go to the, which is no different than the way it is today.
Yep, it just has to. Yep. It just has to go to a different-
So the first two is no different, is no different in, in Addison County anyway, because that's the way, that's the way it-
Yep.
Now, food residuals-
That's different.
Okay.
Yes.
Because you don't have that yet.
We don't. And we are actually doing a study with Highgate Composting right now to, it's a feasibility study to, to, to take a look at what is generated in Addison County. What resources do we have available? One of the, one of the requirements in the bill or, or clause loophole is that if you're not within twenty minutes of a place that you can bring your food residuals, then you, you don't have to comply to this. You have to be within twenty miles. They don't expect you to take your food waste and drive two hours to find a place to, to bring it. So we're looking at what, what resources we have close by. Middlebury College has a big composting facility. And soon to come will be our own high school that are, are starting up their composting facility. And for a while, I, they actually had a, a truck that went around and actually collected composting material from restaurants and grocery stores and brought that down to Middlebury. And I would imagine that that type of collaboration will, will come from this requirement. The, the restaurants, the, the grocery stores, if we can all kind of, if there's a, a garbage truck that comes for food residuals every week and collects that from everybody, that's probably something that we'll be going toward.
The other, you know, just to give everybody a little bit of history, obviously, Vergennes has had a recycling center slash recycling program since the, the mid-eighties. And at first, we just, we just opened it and did it. And then the regulations, and then the regulations started to go into, into effect. And we needed to get a permit and the city got a permit for its recycling center. And it was a category one because we had less than five hundred tons a, a year of recyclables. And as we grew, we went beyond the five hundred ton. I think that's the right number. That's not the right number.
Five hundred tons?
That can't be right.
No.
No. But there's, we, we passed a threshold. Maybe it's fifty. We passed a threshold and we got into a different category. And when our permit was about to, was about to expire, we started to apply for it and found out that we didn't need a permit. And that was because Vergennes was reporting its, its recyclables. And the, the number's a hundred tons is what it is. Cause it's fifty, fifty thou- fifty thou- that's what. So the, and so we no longer have a permit, all right? And because we don't need one because we're doing it just to have, we have a piece of land down there and we have a mobile truck.
Exactly.
So the, the question I, I, what I wonder about is, is what does this mean to the, the operation that we have?
What I think it's going to mean is that that truck that sits down there and collects, collects recycle, recyclable materials will also need to collect the other banned materials from land. They'll need to collect food waste from us. They'll need to collect leaf and yard waste. There'll be a requirement of the haulers. If you take trash, you take this and you take this and you take this.
At that ti- at the, well, that's the thing.
They have to provide that service. It doesn't necessarily have to coincide at the same time, but they have to provide that service.
They meaning, they meaning, yeah. See, that's, see, part of the, part of the potential confusion here is who's providing the service. Is the city of Vergennes providing the service or is our contracted hauler providing the service? And so is it the city's responsibility to make sure that we're meeting the mandate of what we need to have down there to collect? Or is that, like we do right now, contract our way, our way through? It actually, it, it actually is five hundred tons.
Really?
Yeah. If you think, well, if you think about it, it costs about a hundred dollars a ton to run to- Our center contract is about a hundred dollars a ton. It's fifty-two thousand dollars a year. Call it fifty thousand dollars a year.
So you're, you're translating the classically the amount?
And there's a two, there's a two zero, it's five. No, I'm just, just telling you that, that there is. There's five hundred tons of recyclables that are put through our, our center. It's, it's kind of a scary good number. It's, it's a lot of recyclables that we, we deal down there. I know, I'm quite sure that that's, that's a number. I'll pull it on my spreadsheet at, at some point. But anyway, I, so I'm just kind of wondering, all I'm saying is, is I, I think that we have some thinking to do about our recycling center in line of this, in line of this law. Because I think that, that, you know, right now, you know, our recycling program, you go and you recycle. And if you want to use the trash option, it's, it's there, all right? What this law is doing is, what this law may be doing is that, that the program may require us to be in, in actually running a leaf and yard collection. May. I use the word may. So there's some, there's some analysis that needs to be done about, about the city's program.
And it is comforting to know that anybody that we're contracting with for trash, there, that other piece comes along with it. You know, they, whoever we're contracting with is required to do the rest of it. So-
They could put the small guys out of business unfortunately though.
Yeah. Because it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard for them to meet those regulations.
Well, they're already doing a lot of it. I mean, the, the same people that are taking the trash are taking recycling. So this is just adding an extra piece. And the, the composting part, the food residuals, it's definitely the worrisome piece. Everyone's wondering, you know, like, well, there's a lot of detail that came up at the board, let's put it that way. What about the packaging that touched the food? You know, like, there's a lot of questions about how that's really going to happen. But-
My whole question is, what happens when the bottom docks out of the market on these, on, on these recyclables?
The tipping fee goes up and the city pays for money. That's how it works.
Yeah. And so, what, what happens is the government's not going to subsidize. They did it once, they won't do it again.
There seems to be a market for everything that we can recycle.
Is now. Is now. But-
Well, I, I don't see that going away because there's a lot of people that see that this is a potential source of income. There's a potential-
We didn't see the economy taking a drop like it has and stay as low as it has either. So I just think the potential's there.
Like cardboard has come back up. Metal is really high right now. I mean, there's a, there's a, a really good market for, for recycles right now.
And that's because the metals go into Japan.
So's the cardboard. And so's the plastic.
Yeah, it's all going to China.
It's a, most of it is. There's, there's, there's a bunch of newspapers and cardboard that goes up to Canada. And the, the lovely large jugs of detergent, there's a market down in one of the Carolinas and they remake that into jackets. And lots of material, actually. They, they shred that up and that's made into materials. Tires are going into making road material. It seems to be a really growing market, how, how to get the most bang for our resources. So related to that, just the last thing, I have asked dog, Dan, Don, Don Maglanti to help us out with the Vergennes Day recycling. So we have this service at the transfer station that we have these really cool recycle bins that are collapsible. Just unfold them and, and the bag goes in and the top is awesome with different holes. And they're free for events. We had them all over Field Days and I talked to him about it for Vergennes Day. And the night before, the Street Dance, and now the Farmer's Market is Thursday night. So Don and I are going to be putting the recycle bins out around the city park and at maybe Down Falls Park and-
May want to take and see about doing some down to the high school too.
Exactly. I, I printed a copy of the schedule. So everywhere that there's some event scheduled for Saturday, Don and I are gonna put recycle bins out and then he's gonna bring the truck around probably Monday morning and collect all those and bring it back to the transfer station. Cause we, we take recyclable materials now. We're actually going out to bid to see who would like that contract from us because there actually are a lot of companies right now. It's not just Kisel. There are a lot of companies that would really like to bid on taking the recyclables away and sharing the profit with us. We're actually making money at the transfer station now. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions of Cheryl? Peter? No question?
Not related to this.
No.
Okay. Cheryl, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
And thanks for the helps, uh, help with Vergennes Day and taking care of that recycling.
Yeah.
Okay. Next visitors, we have Eric from Lake Champlain Maritime Museum and Representative Diane Lampert. And I don't know who wants to go first. This has to do with the War of Eighteen Twelve celebrations coming up October twelfth.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for, for letting us come in and actually learn a great deal. I, I always enjoy coming to a variety of meetings. I learn something new everywhere I go. And here, another presentation about what we've done in, in Montpelier. And Cheryl did a great job. So before I start with this, if you wouldn't mind my taking a, a moment of privilege to talk a little bit or at least sing Robin's praises as well, I just want you to know what a great job she did during the bridge crisis and that she was the point person that we specifically targeted by name or for, by organization when we had stimulus money in the, in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars to make it available to businesses that were, that were impacted. And there was no one who was gonna know better than, than Robin having that interface with that. And she's a very trusted partner. And I was very pleased to hear her presentation today as, as well as Cheryl's. But we're here to talk about the Lake Champlain Maritime Museum's voyage of the Lois McClure, which I believe some of you may have already gone up and been out on it. And it's been on a forty-city tour and it is coming back to Vergennes. The mayor, the mayor and I spoke about this at French Heritage Day. And I have been in communication with Art Cohen. And there's people from the Vermont Tourism and others who have been involved in this. And I think, Bill, you spoke about it here at the, at the council meeting. So there's a committee that has been formed now that is looking at actually trying to formulate that, that, that homecoming. And so I'm a part of that committee and we have recruited Megan Smith, who's the Vermont Tourism Commissioner, and Eric. And let me introduce Eric. If you don't know Eric, he is the co-director of the museum now. And I'll let him speak a little bit more about what that event is about. Go ahead.
Thanks Diane. And thanks for having us here. The War of Eighteen Twelve, unfortunately, it doesn't quite sing out as much as the American Revolution and a few others. Particularly unfortunate for Vergennes. In fact, you ask most people and the only thing that can come up with is the date that it started. But it was immensely significant to Vergennes, to this region. We didn't really want to go to war with Great Britain because that of course meant going to war with our neighbors in Canada, who are our number one trade partners here in this part of the world. And yet that's exactly what we did incredibly poorly prepared as we were. And we saw fleet actions occurring on Lake Erie, massive fleet buildup on Lake Ontario. And yet, the most significant event of the war, don't take my word for it, pull out the, the History of the British Isles by Winston Churchill. And he'll tell you that the battle for Lake Champlain in Plattsford Bay was the most significant event of the entire conflict. And it really got started, at least from the American perspective, right here in Vergennes, Vermont, when Thomas McDonough identified the falls as the best means of power available to generate the lumber necessary. The Moncton Iron Works would produce all the iron fittings and armaments for the fleet. And then of course be let out, it was a defensible location, some seven miles up the Otter Creek. All a perfect combination to create a fleet that would rival the British as they came out of Canada to take them on. And it was a stunning victory on the part of McDonough, well deserving of celebration. Brought a quicker close to the, the, the war with more favorable terms for the Americans. But really what happened was nothing. There was no gain on either side in this conflict. However, if you talk to any Canadian on the street, they'll tell you that they beat us flat out. So it's an interesting tour. And it's too bad for Vergennes, Vermont, because it played such a significant part in this conflict. And what we're doing at the Maritime Museum is talking about this. The Canadians are certainly talking about the results of that conflict and sticking it in our face every time we talk to them up there. And so the concept came up, Lois McClure, you might go, wait a minute, I thought Lois McClure was a canal boat. The canals weren't even built till after the war. Where's, what's the connection? Well, these, these canals were constructed as a direct result of this conflict. When it came to a close, they went, holy moly, it was really expensive to take stuff out to Lake Erie. We could build a cannon for four hundred bucks, but it costs us fourteen hundred dollars to ship it. So the canal was a, a means to do that. And for Canada, it was even stronger. The Rideau Canal was built explicitly to bypass the St. Lawrence River and avoid the potential conflict of border that was there. So there's a direct connection between the canals. We've made it with the Lois McClure. We've been to Canada before, had an amazing reception throughout our visits. And we came up with this concept of talking about the War of Eighteen Twelve as we moved the Lois McClure. Started at the opening of the bridge celebration. We traveled Lake Champlain. We went down the Richelieu Corridor through the Chambly Canal. Were towed by horses on that canal, a wonderful experience. Turned the corner into St. Lawrence, went up to Montreal and then went up the Ottawa River to Ottawa, the Rideau, to Kingston. The boat just yesterday successfully crossed Lake Ontario and is now back in the United States at Sackett's Harbor. Two more months to go, another twenty odd communities to, to get through. And yet the most important one in our mind is Vergennes, Vermont. It's our last stop. It's probably the most significant stop along the route. And so we're really delighted to be able to, to end our tour here. We have two public days available, as we, I'm sure many of you have seen it down on the dock and under the, the falls in Vergennes. And that would be Saturday and Sunday, the thirteenth and fourteenth. But the concept started coming around to say, well, what's the welcome home phenomenon? You guys have been out there, you've been singing the praises of, of the, the War of Eighteen Twelve, singing the praises of Vermont and the Champlain Valley. And I can't believe how many people are coming to the museum. I was just on the boat in Kingston and I had to just come down and check you guys out and see what it was all about. We've seen about fifteen thousand people thus far and no, no end in sight. So this is gonna be the culminating event and it would seem as though there might be a, a few politicians that might wanna get involved, few state persons that wanna get involved. And the invite list is being worked on, I think.
It's an election year, right?
Well, there's, there's also been a great deal of support. I, I can't stress enough that what came to us in Montpelier too was leveraging. The, the Canadian consulate, the consulate general in Boston was very, very excited about this. Our, our Maritime Museum had received a, a great deal of financial support for this tour from Canada, from New York, from the New York government, from the New York canals. Is it a coalition, New York canals?
Uh, the New York Canal Corporation.
Corporation.
Yep.
And the state of Vermont have all put some significant funds into making this all happen. So I'm just thrilled because it's my community, back to Vergennes and what this means for us here, which is why I've been involved with it and been a spokesperson in Montpelier to help fund this event. So there is a welcoming homecoming, October twelfth. It's a Friday, looking at, it's gonna be the afternoon when the ship comes back home here to Vergennes. And we've got a committee that's looking at putting together a reception. So we're here tonight to aid. We wanna make sure that we know that you know about it, but how important it is that there are other people working on it. So Mayor, part of our ask here tonight, well, was twofold. One of them is actually already been taken care of because, because this reception and event needs the permission to have the ship docked, Vergennes docked for that weekend. And that, I believe we've already been given that, that permission, but it's nice to all-
I think that's unwritten. We, we welcome everyone.
Well, you know, I want to pursue, we just pull up and take space on the dock for a weekend. The other thing that I believe that is very important, which is what has driven our presence here tonight, is we are asking for somebody to be a part of this committee that's a voice from the city of Vergennes. Because we'd like this to be a partnership, not just of New York, Canada, and the state of Vermont, but also the city of Vergennes. So we're, we're, we've come here to ask for you to either appoint, volunteer, or someone to be a representative on that committee.
Is this gonna be meetings during the day or is this an evening thing or that's the hard part?
We're, we're trying to make sure that we can get some, some very good organization, but we wanna make sure that the city of Vergennes is represented on that committee and that your voice is a part of that process.
Is there anyone on the council that would like to serve on this? I mean, I'm, I'm willing to be part, part of it.
I'll, I'll, I know the players. I mean, I'll, I'll serve if no one else really wants to. But I'm happy to be a part of it.
Not wanting to, but I would graciously accept your volunteering- It's not a case of not wanting to, but I would graciously accept your volunteering to do that. And if I can be of assistance in any way, Bill, and Diane, please let me know. I definitely will be there for the event.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. And I think Diane has struck on a very key point. All of this presentation, the boat moving, is all free of charge to every community to go to. And that is because of the great work that our representatives did in securing funding in Vermont, as well as all the other organizations. So it's our opportunity to join together to say, hey, we pulled off a really... There's not a lot going on for the War of 1812. This is one of the most significant things that's actually taking place, so we're very proud of that.
I would hope that we'd get Sue O'Donnell on track.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too, today.
The national anthems, the different national anthems, the whole fanfare of them entering. I don't know if we can find somebody with small cannons and fire a few live ones across the bow, just for, you know...
As they're blanked.
Yep.
Our intent is it could be as small as five of us standing there waving welcome. Or it could be, I mean, it would be disappointing, I believe, that if, in their travels of 40 cities, that they've had 15,000 people interested. And even I have heard from people that have traveled out and have come back, other legislators that have met the ship along the canals and have come back, that we come home here to where it all began and where its historical roots are, that we don't have something put together for it.
We could probably even break out a few bottles of our Virgens wine.
Oh, now there you go.
Don't be turned down.
All right.
So I'll leave you this evening with just the information sheet on the event as we know it, and as it transformed. It's just the pertinent information. And then this is the booklet that's being handed out to every family that comes onboard the boat while it's on tour. And I'll just point your attention at the end. You can see all of the partners that have taken part in this event, so.
And in the center, there's a page of where all the cities that it has been. And particularly, it started from down at the bridge site during the bridge celebration on May 19. Has gone out to those 40 cities and will be coming back home to this point again. So it started and will end within our very backyard.
Bill or Diane, if someone can prepare some sort of announcement with our webpage, so we can start publicizing that. I will see that get...
You might have...
Oops, I'm sorry.
This might have everything that we know about it right now. Yep.
So there's going to be things going on on the 13th and 14th, too?
The ship will be open.
Open for public boarding, and that means we have exhibit panels along the shoreline that will tell the story, the background behind this. Our crew will be onboard. People will be welcome to come on and view the boat, ask questions, engage in what we do.
If I may just add...
Sure.
I know that you folks were working on the archaeological dig, looking for the shipyard last year.
Yes, that's right.
Is that going to be worked into this in any way?
What a great idea. We just, I don't know if you knew, this weekend, we host our annual 18th-century event, but we stepped it up to the 19th century. We held the attack on Fort Cassin. And during that, we actually had one of our archaeologists do a lecture each day about the results of the shipyard. So perhaps...
So the results, are they available at this point?
It's not in a written report. It was a public lecture that was done, although the report is being generated as part of that excavation. And perhaps we could do an evening lecture in the Opera House, bring some artifacts that we retrieved from the site. I think that's a wonderful idea.
It's a stone's throw away where the boat's going to be, so that you can...
Have you pinned down the location?
Have we?
Have you pinned down the location?
That would be kind of giving away the lecture, wouldn't it? Not... There is material that dates back that would be appropriate for it, but there was no smoking gun that is, you know, that's it. That's got to be it. So we're still looking and hoping to do some more research on that.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Actually, I was hoping that it would be the Opera House and maybe even the library.
Well, see, you're not even on the committee, and you already get a great input.
The library has a lot of history there, doesn't it?
It does. The library already has a bunch of history.
And I could probably get as much cabbage cheese as we need.
I'm just going to ask one question. Your email is on the website?
We're going to talk about that in a few minutes.
Okay. Are we tipping it off?
It isn't yet, but that's the subject I have to bring up.
I know Eric has it. I'll get it to you.
All right, I just want to make sure we can connect.
I'll get it to you.
All right.
Any questions of either Diane or Eric? If not, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We look forward to a wonderful celebration. Okay, warrants. They've been around, been signed by everybody, I believe. Any questions on the warrants?
I had a question on the one that went around. It was not on the one dated August 17th, and it was for a license plate reader for $23,725, which was not in the budget that I could see.
We received a 100% grant for a license plate reader. One of the few communities that were, in essence, awarded one.
What does it do?
It actually, it's a pretty amazing tool. It will, it will, it's like a camera, obviously, and it'll read a license plate. And if that license plate is an unregistered, if it's an unregistered vehicle, it'll pop right up on the screen and it's unregistered. It'll, that registration is tied to a person's name. If that person's name no longer has a driver's license, it'll pop up on, if it's, if the vehicle is registered, but the person whose name it is registered to, anybody who that vehicle's registered to, does not have a driver's license, all right, because of suspension, it would pop up on the screen. It actually has all kinds of other tools, which could relate to homeland security. There's...
So it's a good thing.
Well, it's, you know, it is a, it's a tool in the toolbox, you know. It's certainly high-tech.
Did George apply for a grant?
Well, they, I'm not sure if we applied, or we were just automatically given one. We, we've done well. We do have some connections in the highway safety, in the governor's highway safety program. Ted Manal worked for that, so we do have some connection. But I really think, I really think that this was awarded to us because of our track record on motor vehicle, on drug arrests, those types of things. That's what I think. It came to us pretty easily.
Good.
I think they've only, I think they've only distributed about 40 of them, the whole state.
State police has a lot of them.
State police, I think, have sixteen of them or something.
There was an article in the Free Press, and it gave a chart of which departments had local... Some sheriff departments had a few, local police had a few.
That same Free Press article was also raising some questions about the data that's collected. Because the data is collected on every single license plate that is viewed, and it goes, you know, with a data bank, and nobody seems to know what happens to it once it goes there, or who has access, yeah, or who has access or anything like that. So the Free Press, anyway, was raising some issues around...
Privacy.
That privacy, a bit, right, privacy, some privacy issues. And I think there's probably some more, a lot more to come out of that. Because it's pretty clear from the article that the state police didn't have a clue what was going on with the information, how it was going to be used, or who was going to be using it, or other than the obvious instance where you're catching somebody that's alert. But 99% of the information is going to be on...
If you don't have nothing to hide, don't fear it.
So does that get plugged into a computer afterwards?
Yeah. Right there. It's there.
It's right there, right. But I mean, afterwards, the information just stays there, it doesn't go into...
We don't have to take it out and bring it somewhere.
Have to take it out or anything else, anywhere else?
No, but it's accessible to, who knows?
By that machine that's set itself right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Any more questions on warrants? If not, I would ask for approval of the minutes for the City Council Public Hearing Zoning Subregulation, July 17.
Take said motion.
Motion by Randy, seconded by Rennie. Any omissions, corrections, or errors on that? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That was, that was everything, though, right? This city council meeting, end?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so that's that. Budget review. Mel, anything?
I really don't have a lot to, we're still early in the year. You know, obviously, we're not even two months into it, so I really don't... The budget looks great at this point. Hasn't snowed yet, so it should look good at this point.
And for those that haven't visited the website and seen the article, we got a couple of things we need to fix, but Mel wrote an article about being in the black. So please take time to visit the website and read City Voice. Okay. If there are any questions of Mel, we'll move to committee reports and an update of goals. Randy, things how you passed around the PlayStation. Why don't we go right to you, to you first?
Okay, I'll briefly go over this. Probably we need some action on the part of the council with this. We met on August 6th, and as you can see, it was outlined in the report, there are certain recommendations. We looked over the various properties that are available and some that newly came available. We are recommending that Denneker Chevrolet be taken off of the list of consideration, mainly because we felt that the, the committee felt that the purchasing and renovating of the property would probably exceed the cost of a new building. And so we wanted to, we're recommending to eliminate that from the list. From on Industrial Park property, which was on, is on 22A, we're also recommending that that be eliminated from the list, mainly because of the configuration of the property. And it looks like it would only be one curb cut, which would have to be for access for whatever goes on that property, as well as the police station, and there were some visibility issues. So we felt that that property probably would not be suitable for that use. We are also recommending that Kennedy Brothers be taken off the list, mainly because we felt that a better use of that building is economic development and not for putting a police station in it. And so that was the reason for that one. The Virgens Building Supply property, although it is a difficult property to actually obtain, we are recommending that it still stay on the list for a while. It's possible to actually obtain it, but we would have to go to the legislature ultimately to do that if we selected that property. The New Haven Land property we're recommending will still be on the list of considerations. And then we have two other properties that have come available, which we would like to have on the list for consideration. The Addison County Eagles are selling their property, so building and land is available. We haven't done any discussion about cost or anything like that, but it is available, and it has possibilities for a station, obviously a retrofit type of situation. And the Virgens Auto property, which is right next to the property of the Virgens Industrial Park, that is now available. The property itself is probably too small for our use, but it's a good location relative to visibility and access. So I guess I would make a motion to eliminate Denneker Chevrolet, Vermont Industrial Park, Kennedy Brothers, from our list of considerations, and add to the list of considerations Addison County Eagles and Virgens Auto.
Second.
Question?
Okay, open up.
I saw this week an advertisement in a real estate guide saying that Denneker's Route 7 building was for sale. Is he moving back to North Main Street? Have you heard anything about it?
Sure. I've talked to Tom.
Okay.
I didn't realize that it was in the newspaper.
It was listed by Redstones for sale.
So if it was in the newspaper, I'd rather have Tom talk about it, but I don't mind talking.
Well, Tom needs to know all the details.
Basically, what Tom is investigating is, I think that what is not new news is the fact that General Motors, you know, continues to put a lot of pressure on Tom to combine his service department and parts with his sales, all right? And one of his options, obviously, would be to put an addition on his existing facility. Another option would be to sell that facility and then, and build all new somewhere else, all right? So, and I think an option of returning to Virgens, that wasn't talked about at all.
I was curious.
I don't think that's the case at all. I think that Tom...
But if he's selling Route 7 and potentially moving, then I would think he'd be motivated to sell North Main Street. And it might be worth looking at a price just to see.
Yeah.
I don't want to keep going on and on and on, but I'm thinking that, given the circumstances, that it's not like you're forcing him to sell it to the city. If he's a motivated seller, it might be worth looking into.
Yeah, I, I think, Rennie, it's not a deal-breaker for the committee. I've only been to one meeting, but I think, you know, not pushing Denneker off the list is okay, too. All right, I mean, I don't, because I, let me just tell you that, as Rennie indicated, relative to Denneker Chevrolet, it was, it was felt by the committee, just really felt by the committee, that that building is not a tear-down, all right? And therefore, unlike, I'm going to, I'll just publicly say this, Virgens Auto is a tear-down, okay? And so therefore, you know, for the city, you know, the city would be looking at buying, buying that, buying Virgens Auto property for the value of the land. In the case of Denneker, although that building may not be of much value to us, you know, just because of renovating cost, it has value. And I think that the committee felt that because of the having to pay for that value of that existing building, plus what the committee felt would be more than typical renovations to a building, it probably, as Rennie indicated, it'd be cheaper to build new.
Well, I would think the Eagles is in the same position.
Well, it could be.
It could be, I mean... I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just, the other thing that came to mind, the Virgens Auto thing you and I talked about.
Yep.
And you said there's only like a half an acre of acres.
Right, it needs, and it needs, and that's what Rennie says, it says it needs.
And I wonder if that, the yellow building to the south here where the bike shop is, that's three-quarters empty, and that might be available for potential sale as well. And maybe if you put those two pieces together, then you've got plenty of land in a good visible location for new construction.
Well, we were thinking in the back of the land that's in the back of...
The cornfield?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's the other option with Carrera.
Yeah, to buy some of that, that was what we're saying, to take the land from the back, there'd be plenty there.
I like the visibility of North Main Street. We all like the visibility.
Development up there, too.
And actually, that's what we liked about the Eagles, that it's a highly visible spot.
It's a great location, yeah, you can do it.
And assuming that the building is in good shape, one of the good parts about it is that it's a building that's essentially wide open.
Yeah.
I mean, so if you're going to renovate it, you don't have to tear down walls. I mean, it's just a wide-open building, you know, and so...
With a bar.
With a bar. As long as it comes talk.
Or a kitchen.
Yeah. Well, I'm in favor of whatever you want. I mean, I just wanted to get some clarification, but I think that's...
One of my major concerns is you don't know what you're putting into the building. So it's a chicken or egg which came first. If, you almost need to know, in as part of your plan, is what's going to be in the building? Because that's going to have the end effect on how much modification you're going to put to the building. And that could skew you... And that could skew your decision slightly on where you go. Whether it be, it, it wouldn't skew it if, if it was brand new, but you, but that's part of comparing the apples to the apples.
Well, and, and one of the recommendations on here is the next step is to get some preliminary estimates on, uh, a building, um, that, that we, we need to get some of those numbers to know what we're talking about.
And, and there, again, you're either gonna need a site and go from scratch or a building and retrofit that specific building.
Yeah, we know that, that's why, that's why we're here. That's why we gotta get this.
Hey, a question, isn't that, the concerns that you, um, have here for the Vermont Industrial Park, doesn't the New Haven Road facility or location, wouldn't that share the same concerns, visibility, and one curb cut?
Well, uh, the, the difference, Joe, is, is the New Haven, right, Road Site owns a fifty-foot strip, alright? And therefore will not be sharing its ac, will not be sharing its access with anybody to get to Route, to get to New Haven Road. Relative to the Vermont Industrial Parks, it's, it's a, that piece of property that abuts Velco, it's a fourteen-point-four acre parcel. Now, conceivably, the city could purchase the, all fourteen-point-four acres and have a curb cut, alright? But let's say that the city only needs to purchase a couple of acres. And if, and if the city purchases a couple of acres, leaving twelve-point-four acres undeveloped, ultimately, the other twelve-point-four acres would be developed, and then the police station would be sharing. There will, there will only be a single curb cut into that fourteen-point-four acres. So therefore, if there was an office building, retail, something like that, and all of those people are out there trying to get onto Route twenty-two A, we can't get out of the police station, alright? So, the police, the committee, you know, really feels that the police needs to have direct access, direct access, exclusive access to a Class One road. And the, and that site, unless you bought the fourteen-point-four acres, you, you don't have, you won't have that.
I get it. I just, thinking about where the Middlebury, New Middlebury Police Station is, isn't that?
Off to beaten path.
Like, uh, right.
Yeah.
But it's only got one access to Exchange Street there, right? I mean, it, it shares with that entire industrial park.
Yeah, and it has access on Exchange Street, yeah.
The concern about one single access is if an accident tanker has the excellent dead center of that curb, right? How you gonna get out? You're stuck. So, those are things you gotta think about.
Mike, just to follow in what you said, um, about the size of the building too. We haven't had any discussions, and we've got a plan in front of us that, to my personal estimation, is an absolute Cadillac, if not a Mercedes, in terms of a plan. I mean, it's got everything possible, you know, the police station in it. And we haven't had any discussion as to whether that's the sort of thing we want or whether we want a version that might be more affordable for Virgens, um, and still do some, some sorts of things.
That was our next step.
So that was, yeah.
The committee has kind of slugged through that for you.
Okay, yeah. And that's, that so much relates to the size of the lot that you need.
It's a circular decision-making process, always a dynamic.
Hey, guys, we gotta get back to the, the basics here. Please raise your hand because we're jumping around, Randy.
That was the, one of the points I was gonna make is, is that, that is our very next step. We had to pare down the list, and then we're gonna sit down with George's wish list, and then we're gonna pare it back to what it needs to be. What we have to put in there legally by law and what, uh, what George would want. And then we'll bring that in front of the whole board and have them, we all make a decision on it from there. We'll make a recommendation.
We've, do we have any more discussion? Cause Rennie made a motion, Randy seconded it, um, I believe to... Bill, did you have some?
Sounds like you amended it.
I, no, I mean, I, I guess I don't really, I don't know that a motion's necessary at this point, but if...
We can take a consensus, consensus vote?
The only reason, Bill, why, uh, I urge the committee to bring, to come back to the council. I mean, the council started, and I realize it crossed a March election, I understand that, but, you know, there was thirteen sites that got narrowed to eight, got narrowed to whatever, and I, I don't think it's the committee's right to narrow the list. I think that's a city coun, that's a city council decision. The other thing is, is, uh, is there's, there's a couple of things that need to happen kind of simultaneously. Chicken or the egg here. One is, is the committee does need to hone in on, uh, on the facility, whether or not it believes. And of course, I mean, the committee, I mean, we are gonna need to have architects, you need some consultants involved here, but there needs to be some idea about, are, are we talking about a three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, or seven thousand square foot building, alright? The committee isn't, they have not, they're not there yet, alright? That, as Randy indicates, that's really their next step. The other thing is, is that designing, uh, yeah, there, there's gonna be some differences in site development costs depending on where you build a building, but really, the, the real dollars are in the building, alright? So, we do, we will need to have a cost of a new building, and then you just simply add your site development costs on top of that to get your budget. Relative to existing properties that aren't tear downs, it's gonna cost us some money, alright? It's gonna, it's gonna cost us some money to, to have professional consultants in here, in here to try to come up with an estimate, alright? And, and, and I think that the committee, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but I think the committee would like to have a couple of buildings on the list to fully analyze, not five, alright? Because I think that, that's gonna cost some money. And, and I would hope that, that number one, uh, if there's, if some of those five, you don't like the locations, then let's not spend any money. I mean, let's narrow, let's narrow the field of, of potential sites involving buildings that, that would be renovated. And I think that's what the ultimate goal would be tonight. And, and like I say, if Denneker, if, if Denneker's on the list, if it stays on the list, and I'm trying not to put any tone in my voice here. If it's on the list, it's gonna have to be analyzed, alright? And, and, and that's gonna cost some money. Likewise with the Eagles.
Well, it, it will and it won't, it all depends on what the purchase price is. You know, Tom can say he wants two million dollars for it, and then you know you're not gonna analyze it. Because I think, I think we need to get to that point to say, what do the Eagles want, what does Tom want? And does either one a viable alternative or not, and they both may go off the list at that point.
Right, yeah.
So, I think that's, I guess I'm willing to take off Industrial Park, Kennedy Brothers, I agree, it should be economic development. I guess I'd leave Denneker's in for another month or two until we know what he wants for it.
It's not a deal breaker for...
That's, that's my only...
It's no big deal.
Yeah, okay. And if he wants too much money, I first wanna make a motion.
I modify my motion to, um...
Not remove Denneker.
Not remove Denneker from the list at this point in time, and if the seconder agrees, we're fine.
I agree. Okay, we have a motion that has been amended, uh, with a list of those that will be removed. Joan, you understand which ones those are?
Yeah.
And which ones they aren't?
Yes.
Okay, as long as you have it, and we can remember till, we have the minutes, do we get the minutes? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry.
One other comment on that, Mike, um, in terms of the cost of the building. I think there's been some discussion about the, the building being very similar to the New Haven building. And the information on the New Haven building, and unfortunately, one of the guys named, he's in your shop, maybe you need to be, I'm not sure. But they, they were able to provide the cost information on the construction of that building. I presume it's public record anyway, but that was, that really short-circuited some of the discussion.
And we also have, we also have some, um, figures that the chief had gathered.
Yes.
On Middlebury, right? On Middlebury, so we, we have a rough idea of the, the cost per square foot.
One of the things that I would highly suggest, cause we had a situation where we did a modification up to St. Albans, is if you're gonna build, build slightly for the future, not necessarily occupy some of the space, but have it there so that it can be finished to later date or down the road, because, uh, retrofitting a building is, is even more expensive. So, take that into consideration. I know that originally, uh, New Haven was supposed to be twenty-five percent, uh, larger than what it was, and because they didn't ask for the right allocation of funds, they got chopped, so. And then we got to St. Albans and same thing. They left it the same size as New Haven, but then we went back and did some retrofitting. And luckily enough, uh, we had some people in-house that did a lot of the work, that kept costs down, but it's still the work that happened, so. Okay, enough said on that one. As long as we're, Rennie, anything on economic development or incentives going, Rennie, at this point? Nothing from the partnership?
Well, I got a, um, I got an email today from Kevin Rooney about a parking study that was done in a different community, which I couldn't print out, but, um, I will, because I think it's something we wanted to probably talk about, maybe looking for next spring, maybe, if we wanna do a parking policy of some sort.
I wonder, speaking of partnership, I think they did a great job to get the group together to weed the flower beds this Monday night.
Last night, yeah.
I'm, I'm a servant on the board as the council representative. We had a planning meeting and set out like some goals for the coming year.
I'm trying to make sure that I got all your notes here. Okay, um, Ziggy, anything with seniors?
No, I see a lot of them on the streets and stuff, and they talk to me, so. When I go to the store, I plan on being there about a half hour, three quarters an hour, and I know I run into somebody.
But nothing to report?
No, nothing.
Okay, and Joe, Recreation Committee?
Uh, there's been, uh, some contact with Carrera about, um, revisiting the issue of, uh, of easements for the rail trail. Uh, they're in favor of, of looking at that. We just have to get them some specifics. I've also received some information about some, possibly have some funding for grants for walkways and bikeways and kind of at the eleventh hour, so I'm hoping to get that, a little bit of investigation into that.
If we have an opportunity, uh, I don't know if we can go for a walk and take a tape measure with us. Uh, we, we need to span a, a gully somewhere along there, and, uh, I don't know who originally laid out the trail or plans, uh, but if we can go over and figure out where that is, we gotta come up with a way to bridge that. And I don't know if Carrera has, ever has any scrap planks that we might be able to makeshift. The trick would be getting it where it's gonna go and getting it dropped in position, so.
We're up on that end or...
It's up towards the...
It's up behind Velco, yeah.
There were, yeah, there were three, yeah, there were three, as I can recall, there are three bridges already built.
Okay.
Um, and I think there was only one left, and the one left was the largest span, which is...
About thirty feet, you said, I think?
Is, um, up by the Velco, um, Vermont Industrial Parks, uh, property. And, uh, there's a pretty good gully there to span.
Depends on how high you wanna put it, I suppose.
That's true.
So, anyways, food for thought, figuring out, maybe we can take a walk out there and see if we can get something for nothing or what it's gonna cost to try to...
Mike, and Joe, I, I met with Bruce Bushy, uh, last week, uh, because relative to easements, uh, you know, where we, uh, we, we, we have the middle, we never had the ends, and I, I'm, and obviously, you're working on the north, I'm working on the south, alright? And we should, uh, we should get this connected here. So, Bruce is fine. He understands that we, we would be looking at an easement to be able to construct. And I really think that the only reasonable way to approach, uh, the, uh, the approach to the trail is through a suspended, a, a suspended bridge through that wetland. I, I, you know, the idea of, of trying to get permits and whatever to run a road. I think it got held up, uh, many years ago, um, probably before your time, Rennie, trying to combine a driveway and a pedestrian, you know, a driveway into the lot and a pedestrian route into the lot. And, and I don't know that, that folks really understood, you know, how challenging it would be from a permit standpoint to pull that off. And Bruce under, you know, Bruce and I spent some time together and met with, uh, Alan...
This is Bruce's Land by Potash Brooks?
Yes, uh, with Alan Quackenbush, um, a year ago, I'm gonna say. And Bruce understands that, that, you know, some kind of easement to accommodate, uh, a, a, uh, a raised bridge is, is what we would be looking at, at least for the first X amount of feet to ultimately get to that, get to that trail. So I think if, you know, if the, if we can get the easements on both ends, I think then we have a project. I, uh, I, I really think that, you know, uh, even as it relates, let's say if this is a project that we were gonna seek funding for, I mean, if you don't have the easements, you don't, you don't have a project. And, uh, uh, so anyway, that's, I just know that's how it works, you know?
Thanks. Alright, anything else, Joe? No, that's it for now. Appreciate that, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bill, anything on your end of the world happening that we need to know about? Nothing more, we, we know what's happening, you're volunteering for the, the, uh, October twelfth event.
It's got to have an end point to it.
Um, we got some other stuff, uh, that I'll bring up here in just a minute, and it relates to something that Joan brought up. Uh, just to let you some, know some things that I've been doing, oops, I skipped over Peter. Peter, go to you first. Anything to report, finance, salaries, or energy savings for the city?
Uh, the energy piece, um, I'm making connections this week, gonna meet with, um, Kevin Lehman. I forget exactly which group he's with, but he's kind of the contact person on the energy stuff. Um, and, uh, our employee, Mel, has been whipping me into shape on the finance thing.
Good.
In that, uh, I'll be reviewing some stuff, um, this week on that, in order to meet the deadline at the end of the month.
Uh, on the energy side, um, I had the opportunity to get in touch with Green Mountain Power about another issue and was talking about, uh, the, uh, wind turbine. And there's some rumors that, you know, any more rumors, facts, or fiction, uh, that that may have to come down? So...
The jog court?
No.
Where?
Neighbor.
Oh.
Okay.
What's that? What are you talking about?
The, there was rumor that, or it wasn't rumor, that they told me that that, that may have to, wind turbine may have to come down, or they may have to buy a house over on High Street.
We know where that is.
So, um, I, I don't know, that was out of the GMP employees, uh, that, that was kind of the directive they ended up at that last meeting, so I don't know where that's at, at this point. So, enough about that. Okay, um, I, yep, go ahead, I'm sorry, Randy.
That's all right, you could, I was gonna, I was gonna skip over you, but that was...
But you said you had, you, you're gonna volunteer for the, uh...
Farmers market.
Farmers market, yeah, so...
I've already been talking to Rhonda about, uh, recently, we had a visit from a health inspector that went in there and looked at our people who are preparing foods and selling them there. And, uh, they were warned about hand washing stations, so that's portable hand washing stations. And what I heard, uh, I can't quote exactly, but it was around two hundred and fifty dollars per station. And, uh, this is an issue that the farmers market is working on, trying to get it resolved, figure out what the best way to handle that is.
Are they saying each, each exhibit have to have their own?
If they, if they're offering prepared foods, like they're the Greek, they had the Greek food there, they would need a station, the person who was doing the hamburgers or, they would need a washing station too also.
That's something, that needs to be checked out because that sounds a little redundant. They don't do that in Middlebury, they don't do that in, uh, uh...
This was just, this just happened last Thursday, so I, I, all I know is that this person came through.
Yeah, well...
And they don't do a show.
Passed, passed judgment on some of them, and some were warned, some were fined.
Hopefully, uh, we have some information or can get, you can get some information on who it was, uh, so they can be contacted to find out what's happening in the other, uh, surrounding markets and why we're being trading, treated different.
Right, 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 and that's, and that's what I'm gonna work on with Robin.
Okay.
Robin, excuse me.
Yep, anything else?
No, no, sir.
Um, I attended the school board meeting back on July sixteenth, I think I briefed you on that a little bit, but, uh, they're supposed to be having some more meetings, I haven't seen it, but it, it is very important that, uh, we get as many people to attend as possible because this upgrade or renovation is, could have, uh, impact taxes down the road. I mean, we're talking, uh, fair, I'm not saying that this stuff doesn't need to be done, but the citizens and the council needs to be part of this, so, uh... So we all own part of it. I attended the partnership along with Joe on August 2nd, they're planning on a membership drive for full swing shortly. Please consider being an active member and getting involved with the future of our city. That goes to the citizens and the board. I also attended a luncheon with Bernie Sanders on July 29th, to, yeah, Fersberg Town Hall. He kind of gave a state of the union of how things were and why he feels he should be reelected. He brought up some very good points, and one of the biggest things that I walked away with is we have a lot of people in a lot of high places that are lying to us, they're not feeding us the correct information, okay? So, so and so says they do this, and so and so says they, they do this, you gotta be careful, because they're not giving you the whole story. So that really sent me in a tizzen, so I said, who do I believe and how do I vote? So stay tuned, news at 11.
Be honest with you, I think I'll just change on that.
Well, you know, when you're trying, when you're trying to put somebody into office, you'd like to be able to have some trust in them, so that you know that they're doing the best for the country, and I think it would be nice if a certain individual would continue to do his job he's getting paid for, and not worry about running it, and the other person to get his ass in gear, to, if he gets elected, be ready to hit the ground running, and just back off on all the stuff that's going on. Enough of my opinion. A citizen asked me if you council members would mind having your email addresses publicized on the website. They said if they wanted to be able to get ahold of you, it would be nice, so I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot. Send me an email and let me know if you're willing, and those that are willing, the email addresses will be added to the website.
How do you get off, how do we get off that?
How do you get off the website?
I'm just kidding.
You want, you want.
You have no idea.
You want an email?
No, it's all fine.
I don't want for reelection.
There you go, there you go, yeah, okay.
The thing about it, email is, you can just push delete, you know, you don't have to read it or give it.
Yeah, yeah.
Respond to it. Last month, Joan sent me some information relating to what they call a third-party software, about polling information, meaning going out and trying to do research and surveys. To make a long story fairly short, we forwarded the information to Jeff, our guru on the web, and he is currently working on this. There are several what they call plugins that are available, but none of them are compatible with our latest version of what they call WordPress. He is searching for a plugin that will work directly on our present dashboard, rather than trying to import information from a third-party site, which is a pain, and you can run into problems. So Joan, your suggestion hasn't got lost, and it has, it's very valuable, and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to pump it up. But the thing that scared us, or actually scared Judy the most, is this software has only been out for a couple weeks, only been available for a couple weeks, that says, there's no track record, who's debugged it, all that stuff, so. My beautiful wife is having her watchful eyes on that to make sure that we try to come up, and, and we're doing some other things with the web as far as. So if you see something a little bit that's not where it's supposed to be, Jeff's doing some work, and it may be a little bit out of sorts for a little while, but he is working full-time now, and so he's gotta, he's fitting stuff in. All right, Virgin's Day, of course, everybody knows this, this Saturday, so we're asking anybody that's available and willing to help set up or tear down. We're always, always can use help to do that. As a matter of fact, I gotta figure out how, gonna get the PA system set up and going.
Mayor, my niece is getting married at our camp on Saturday, so I will not be at the Virgin's that day.
Well, you have a fun time at the wedding, and have us all, have a drink for us, 'cause we won't be allowed to drink in public, not that way. The last few nights of the falls being lit, is, it's coming to an end as of Sunday, so I plan on writing down after this year, the people that are doing it for us are doing a fantastic job, and of course, we wanna thank Green Mountain Power, one of our major sponsors, and of course, the City of Virgin's for allowing that to happen. City Voice is on the website, and Bill tells me we got a couple corrections that we need to make. Wanna publicly thank Lynn and Dave Leclair for taking care of our flower gardens that are around our signs on both end, on the entrances of Virgin's. I'd like to congratulate Virgin's Fire Department, they brought home a couple of trophies from the state convention this weekend, and by all means, don't forget the Pancake Breakfast, Saturday AM, and if you come at the right time, you will be served by Peter Welch. So, he called today and wanted to know if he could, well, his staff called today and wanted to know if he could come help, so, sure, why not? Okay, all right.
Our Peter Welch.
Public comment. Shannon?
Just a brief update for everyone, now that the regulations have passed, we're refocusing. We're exploring the idea of a conservation committee as outlined in the plan. We're trying to figure out, really, if we need a separate body, or if this is something that a lot of the pieces and parts can be handled by the planning commission, we're looking into the legalities of it all, we've taken some testimony on it. So we're exploring all of that, and in the coming months, we'll come forth with a recommendation for you, but just wanted to let you know what our activities are.
Okay, thank you.
And I have, just a comment about the new plan, occasion to use it as the RV meet.
Oh, good.
And it was like, this thing really works, it's like you can find what you're looking for, sensible, no questions.
Fantastic.
And that's just kind of a proof of the pudding there, that worked really nicely.
That's what we were trying to achieve, so fantastic. You passed your first test.
Okay, go with the public comment, old business, Crosby Farms Stormwater, Mel?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just be brief, if some of you may have seen Hardigan, we hired Hardigan to come to the city and televise, if you will, much of the stormwater system in Crosby Farms. We, I'm gonna say that we did about 60% of the system. The people that live on the, on the upper parts, Buska Court, that area, really have never experienced any problem, and so, you know, we focused our attention on the, on the, on the lower areas of the system. And we did find, in doing this, we actually did find where the 24-inch pipe that leads from the road to the detention pond, about 10 feet short of the detention pond, there was a series of rebar welded in the culvert. We, the only thing that we can think of is, is there actually was rebar on the outlet pipe of the detention pond, and we bar, we removed that not that long ago, and the only thing we can think of is that, that's the way that was constructed for safety reasons, to keep kids or deer or something going up there, but I can tell you, that's not the industry standard. I mean, there's, there's box culverts all over the planet without a jail door, keeping, keeping people for, for the very reason of resulting in obstruction. So that's what we think, is that there was this, there was some rebar at the end of that pipe, and then whoever owned the property that is now owned by Jason Russell may have extended that pipe, you know, 10 feet, 15 feet, with, and there was no rebar in the end of it. So we had no knowledge that there was some rebar in the middle of this pipe, and there was a two-by-four down in the bottom, there was a surveying stick in the bottom, some, some, there was some obstruction there. The other thing that we uncovered today was, once the flow that goes into the pond, it passes through a 15-inch pipe into an overflow structure, and leaves the overflow structure in a 36-inch pipe. So you have a 24-inch pipe coming into the detention pond, you have another ditch that runs behind the properties on Green Street Extension, you know, Louis Muzzy, Paul Snyder, Stanley Luntz, those houses, there's a ditch that runs behind them that also goes into the pond. So you have a 24-inch pipe coming into a pond, and an, and an open ditch coming into the pond. And there's a 15-inch pipe that leads into this overflow structure, and, and again, there's a 36-inch pipe that leaves the overflow structure, and that's the typical design of a detention pond, so that to, to hold back sediment, to not release massive amounts of water to the Green Street ditch, the pond starts to fill, and when it hits elevation 93.5, it goes, it spills into the overflow structure and out the, and out the 36-inch pipe. The 15-inch pipe, we found today a rock that was 15 inches by about six inches square, suspended in this, in this culvert, about halfway into this pipe, so it's not like somebody, it's not like vandalism where somebody wedged this, this stone in there, but we think that this stone came from the, the ditch that was created at the inlet pipe, and in the early, possibly in the early days, when there wasn't any cattails or anything in the pond, that, that stone carried its way through the detention pond and into, into this culvert, or it happened two weeks ago, you know, we don't, we don't know, it had a plastic bag around it. That's not like the, that rock that we found is not like the smoking gun, and the, and the, and the reason is, is that, yes, yes, that was causing an obstruction, and yes, it may have resulted in the detention pond rising, but the real problem is the fact that when the, the overflow structure takes, the overflow elevation is 93.5, the inlet pipe is 92. So when you have 18 inch, when you get to 93.5, which is 18 inches above 92, the inlet pipe is, is surcharging, okay? So what we, what we are going to do on Monday is remove the overflow structure, and we are going to order a new overflow structure that reduces the overflow. We thought that we could cut this thing, and maybe we can, but we can reduce the overflow elevation from 93.5 to somewhere between 91 and 91.5, so that the inlet pipe doesn't surcharge, all right? So that's what, so that's what we're gonna do. Also, we've cleaned out the ditch on Green Street, so we're working this problem from the downstream side, and we, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna claim victory here, but I can tell you, those are some obvious things that have been uncovered, you know, through, you know, Jimmy Laro and I spending a lot more, more time than we'd like to in a detention pond, but having Brent Rakowski around and having Hardigan come and really fully analyze this thing, we, we've learned a heck of a lot. We know a lot more about the Crosby Farms Stormwater System today than we, than we did before we started this, before we had this mess on our hands, all right? And then the next step is to work our way into the middle of the development, there is some problems, we think, there still is some problems in the Crosby, in the Crosby Court portion of the development, and then also up on the top end, the whole Christian church, and any ditching that might divert some water out of the middle of the development, sending it either on Green Street or on New Haven Road, might also. So, you know, I think that we've, we've, I think we're on the right course here. This has been a fresh, this has not been fun for any, for anyone, including obviously the folks that have had their, their basements, you know, flooded in, in this endeavor, and, you know, we have a good relationship with Matt Pedrosa, I think his name is, at A&R. He under, he understands that the situation, he was at our meeting down here, and Brent has made him aware of what we're doing. And, you know, if they, I'm just gonna go ahead and do it, I'm not applying for permits, I'll apply for that someday, and if they wanna send me a letter and they wanna scold me, it's okay with me, it's, it's fine, I, I wanna take care of the folks in Crosby Farms and.
One of the things that we did say to the people, though, that we wouldn't meet with them, so we oughta, at, once we get, at some point, September, we oughta take and regroup, just to.
Yeah, obviously, I sent, I sent an email out to, I don't have everybody's email address, but I sent an email out today to Jeff Tartt and Sue Ferland. I, I could find a little bit, a little bit more time to find Jay Curtis, so, but yeah, I think, Mike, now we're, now that Hardigan has done its work, I, I think that we can do another mailing out to folks and have another meeting, and let them, let them know what we've, what we've done. And I'm hoping, you know, really, some of the folks in there, they can't sleep at night when rain is being forecasted, you know, and so that's not a, that's not a very pleasant way to, to live, so, so we'll, we'll try to get something out. You know, I'd love to say that we're gonna get something out this week, but we, I think we agreed that we would, we agreed that once we got this, once we got the camera work done, and once we could fine-tune our recommendations, which actually are quite a bit more than what was, what I think I shared with the board at the last meeting, there's, there's more things that we're gonna be, that we're, that we're gonna be doing to, to correct that, so. So that's the update, update on that. I'm gonna just really burn through some things in the city manager's report in light of the time. If you haven't been down to the basketball court, the skating rink area, go down and take a look at it. It, it, it really is a nice job, I mean, I was absolutely embarrassed with what we had there before. New surface, it's, it's, the color is tan, it's not green, and, and so we actually picked a color that was a little different, and, and it's, it's the lightest color that we could find, so, 'cause one of the problems with the skating rink is that dark colors ends up absorbing the, absorbing, absorbing heat from the sun, so we, we think that we've got the right color. It really, it really looks nice, there's a, you know, professional-sized basketball court in the middle, there's two other practice hoops, the other four hoops have been taken down, so it really is, it's a nice, it's really a nice facility, so take, take a look at it when you get a chance. Pool closes on, on Friday, we'll, we'll share financial information with you in another, at the next meeting. I have this, as I've explained to everybody before, I have to run a, it's the only department I have to run a separate spreadsheet, because I run the, the city's on a fiscal year, July 1 to June 30, but I run the pool on a, on a seasonal basis, which is a calendar year. So anyway, we're, we're in, we're in great shape, you know, financially.
I ran into Roland at the store.
Yeah.
And I said hi, and just was chit-chatting him, and he's telling me, I'm going down, show him how to put the things, they have to take these plugs out here, these other three plugs out there, so he says, and next spring, I'm going down and help put it back together.
Oh, good, that's good.
Otherwise, it would've been a great, it would've been a great pool year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the pool, a couple of handouts I gave you, I gave you an updated copy of a delinquent tax report, pretty impressive in report, where we only have 16 people who still owe taxes from last year, which, you know, when you send out 932 bills, that's, I'd say that Virgin's oughta be pretty proud of itself, that people in Virgin's pay their bills.
So our, our new number is 29-4?
Well, that's.
Or 29-5?
It's the total, that includes interest and penalty, and this, this report actually leads me into another handout that I gave, they gave everybody that looks like, that looks like this, and this is the sheet that I give you when I'm forecasting and projecting cash carryover, and I can tell you that the, the actual revenues, you know, this is subject to audit, but the, but all of the the revenues are obviously deposited and reflected in, in the June 30 budget report, report. The expenditures, this takes into account any bills that we paid in July that were really for June expenses, and then you go down where it says reduction in deferred revenue, and you probably are wondering, what is, what is that? And what it is, is that we are able to count all of the tax collections that we, that we receive in the first 60 days of the fiscal year, and last year, 60 days, 60 days into the fiscal year, the balance of delinquent taxes was $50,900. So therefore, we had to defer, i.e. we couldn't count $50,900 worth of delinquent taxes. The report that I just gave you, you don't count interest and penalty, 'cause that's under another, a different accounting principle. You just count the first, second, third, and fourth installments of those, of those years, and I think it comes to 20, it comes to $25,094 and a quarter. So therefore, our. So, therefore, our deferred revenue changes from fifty thousand nine hundred to twenty-five thousand oh ninety-four, an improved position of twenty-five thousand dollars, which goes right to the bottom line. And therefore, when you, when that goes right to the bottom line, that fund balance pre-audit, remembering that we were projecting somewhere in the one-eighteen, we, we used one-eighteen when we set the tax rate. I think, I've, I've lost track of some of the numbers I've given you. And if I thought maybe we would be at about one-twenty-five, or maybe I said I really don't know, 'cause I don't know how much taxes we're gonna collect. But, today's, you, you can start to take these numbers literally to the bank, okay? 'Cause we've collected this money. And if we can collect just a little more money before, before July thirty-first, that will improve our position a little more. But, obviously, the, the hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars, I think, is what we use to, from the fund balance. So, that's, that's a, that's a safe number.
Twenty-five grand's a penny on the tax rate.
There it is. Exactly, Bill. The other thing, uh, I gave you a nineteen-page trial balance. Uh, I will, I would be happy some other night to hold some kind of a clinic or training session for those of you that really wanna learn about a trial balance. And I really, I really think that you should, to be honest with you. I think that, you know, if folks are interested, I'd, I'd be happy to, to have a meeting in front of a meeting. Uh, like if, and I really think that if, if I had thirty minutes or forty-five minutes prior to a seven o'clock meeting, I could, I could probably walk you through this trial balance and you'd have a much better understanding of the twenty-eight funds that we, that we operate here. And I, and I really think that you should. So, maybe, and maybe in September, one of the meetings in September, uh, you know, we could, we could, we could set that up.
We only have one meeting in September.
I think two. Is it one? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, really?
We have September eighteenth.
Gosh, I was hoping for two.
(laughing).
Okay. Well, anyway, I wanna, I really, I, I, I would like to do that for folks. It's, it's, uh...
I wanna study it first.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that's all I had, Mike, for Manager's Report.
Okay? Any questions about? If not, we will move on to, to business. And that has to do with appointing, uh, Development Review Board members in alternates. And I slipped a little bit on something here. Uh, I was supposed to get Lowell, and I forgot to call him.
Okay.
Okay? So, uh, we can, I guess, still couldn't do that, but it won't be tonight.
Looks like he's okay anymore.
No. Uh, he's not on the council.
It was about being a PC member. It was about Lowell being a possible PC member.
Oh, oh, I got it.
Okay. Development Review Board. We have, uh, up for re, uh, reappointment Kerry Barrows, Peter Garen, Alexis McGuire.
And Ziggy as an alternate.
And Ziggy as an alternate. Now, the only one I didn't get in touch with is Ziggy. We're gonna put her on the spot. But Kerry said yes, Peter said yes, and we have a situation with Alex where she would only prefer to serve on one board. So, we have to figure out...
I'm not hearing that.
You're not?
No.
So, we're gonna point her to both? Well, we'll point her to this one.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd ask for a motion for all those reappointments, uh, for the two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen date. Randy makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Randy, second, set. Any questions? No questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried.
Yeah, it might be, if, I think it might be more, one thing is to go ahead to item eight B, and then, I will talk about the two requests for leave of absence separately, or after you deal with the planning commission.
We'll do the, all right. Planning Commission. The people that are up for, uh, is Shannon. You're up? I didn't call you. Did I? (laughing). Well, I'll be darned. I got CRS. We remember that. Uh, Alex McGuire, uh, Stacy Raphael, um, and those it? So, and we don't, we have a vacancy for the ex-officio member, and so, we, we really don't need that position at this point, do we?
Not legally. You don't have to have it.
Not legally, no. So, uh, Randy says, uh, all in favor of those ones. And Randy will second it. And so, no discussion needed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Those are reappointed to two thousand fourteen. Go ahead, Mel.
Yeah, now that two of the members have been reappointed, uh, they have requested, each of them have requested a leave of absence. Alex has requested a two-month leave of absence of August and September. Obviously, August is over, so really, it's a, it's a one-month leave of absence. She's, uh, she, she, her husband's building a garage, and she's taking care of her four kits. So, she really is just not able to, to attend meetings, uh, through, through the summer. Uh, so, that's one, the request. And the other request is Stacy Raphael is actually, she's been away in the month of August, and she's, she's been taking classes. I even hate to say classes. I don't know if that's right. But, she's writing a thesis. And, and therefore, her time is very much consumed with that and will be for the months of September, October, and November. So, so Alex is requesting a two-month leave of absence from the DRB and the Planning Commission for the months of August and September. And Stacy is requesting a four-month leave from the Planning Commission for the months of August, September, October, and November. And, and why we, you know, obviously, in some instances, people just don't come to meetings. But, by, by taking a leave of absence, and the law is actually silent on leave of absence, to be, to be honest with you, but I don't, it's not causing me any discomfort. If you were to grant both of these people a leave of absence, it changes our quorum requirements. And, and that helps the board. Uh, and I, and I, like the other, last night, uh, the board couldn't hold a meeting, 'cause only three members were there, and they needed four to be a quorum. And so, when people are having to take extended leaves like this, uh, you know, this probably, this is really a better way to, better way to handle it.
I have a question. So, you still have a vacant spot? Is there anybody there?
Uh, well, there has been some, one of the things that, you know, Mike brought up, someone that might, might be of interest, you know, in the, the other thing is, you know, we're hoping that folks are reading the newspaper and watching this, uh, and should contact Shannon or myself or the mayor about, about, uh, if they're interested in being on the Planning Commission. And typically, you know, I mean, we could even put something in the newspaper in the form of a deadline. And so, they all come in. And what we did before, uh, was, there was an interview team that consisted of the chairman, the chairman of the DRB, the chairman of the Planning Commission, myself, and maybe included the next, and next...
David Austin.
David Austin, all right? So, so I, what, what, I, I guess what, I haven't really talked to Shannon about, about this, but the Planning Commission is really fine, you know, taking the lead in, in encouraging members. Or they'll just take whoever you, you send them. It really doesn't, it really doesn't make any difference. There, there was a series of questions that we, that the, that the chairs asked potential candidates, uh, as they were, you know, and it'd be the first time ever where the people were actually competing for a position on a Planning Commission.
Yeah, usually chasing them.
Well, you're, they're out of their sentence to, to the position. But, uh, but anyway, uh, but yes, Zig, that's correct. We, we still are down one member. The law is no less than three nor more than nine. Uh, I think our, I know that our history and may, and maybe even our rules of procedure speak about seven. They both operate by seven.
Right.
I really think it's because there's eight, there's nine chairs at the table. Uh, you know, seven members of the board, myself, and, and an applicant. That's, that's how we come up with. If we had a bigger table, you know, then we could probably go, go with a bigger board. But, that's all the chairs, that's all the chairs that we own.
So, there'd be five people for now, for the next few months, because Stacy will be out?
Four. Well, for next month, next month, four. And then, because, because Alexander's out. So, next month, the PC has four. So, they would have, they would have a meeting with three. They could have a meeting with three. The following month, they will, uh...
At five.
They will be at five. They can have a meeting with three.
Okay. So, even though there's only four, they can still...
They can...
Lonzer's three.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I think under that, they can't.
That's, well, that's correct.
Okay.
So, what we're, what I'm looking for is, is official, official action on those two requests for leave of absence.
Make a second motion.
Randy made a motion. Randy, leave second it. Discussion? None? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Appointment of a health officer.
Uh, I sent you out a blank sheet only because I was in a rush. I'm the, I'm the current city health officer, and I think that Mayor Danil's, my guess is that he will recommend that you reappoint me or find somebody else, because if you don't, the mayor becomes the health officer, uh, by law, on August twenty-ninth or something like that. So...
I wondered why that was, that blank was included. Now, I know. You wouldn't... Since I, since I love that position so much, I would gladly, uh, make a motion to appoint.
Spoken like a true friend.
I'll say that.
Okay. Uh, Randy made the motion to appoint Mel, and Ziggy second. That's good, because you wouldn't want me to be the health officer. Mel and I have already talked about some places around town that are getting...
I need a deputy. I could use a deputy.
All, okay. No discussion on that. All those in favor of Mel being a health officer? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um, you gonna have something that has to be officially signed?
Yeah, you, I think you just need to sign there somewhere in my...
You gonna be, just sign here?
Sign it, and I'll take care of the rest of it. Yeah. But, you know, you're a piece of crap. I'll take care of everything.
I'd make sure that, that his name is on the correct line. Otherwise, you may end up being...
He trusts me.
Like I said...
Things will change.
Change, no. That's right. What's one more? Um, for some reason, in my packet, I get the...
You're kind of out of order.
Yeah. Who, who's been messing with my packet?
I don't know. All right, actually, you may have, it may have been delivered to you out of order.
All right. Uh, next thing we have to do is sign a certificate of application, uh, our appointment of the city clerk. That's, council's gonna do that, right?
Yeah.
So, I take it I have the official copy?
Anyone, anyone will work.
Okay. Pass it down and back, so we can get, uh, take care of Joan being the designated delegate for BLTC annual business meeting. Mel?
Oh, uh, well, town fair is on October something.
Fourth.
October fourth. And I, I know, you know, Peter, Peter's going, Randy's going, Randy's going, anybody who wants to go can go.
I don't know if I can or not yet, but...
Uh, but one of the things during their business meeting, uh, is there is only one voting, one designated delegate per town, all right? And I really don't know, I really don't know if I'm going or not, to be honest with you. So, uh, so, somebody who's definitely going. I think that sometimes, if the manager goes, they have a voting right by default. Randy, is that, is that, or did, or do...
No, I think you still need to be appointed.
So, I, uh, I really don't, I really don't know if I'm, if I'm going. So, uh, so relative to the business meeting...
I appoint Randy.
I was gonna...
Well, you're just low.
You're the senior alderman, after all.
All right. I will take, I will take the appointment.
Okay. So, Randy will be the one to be appointed. Do we have to have any motion?
Is that only for one day?
Yeah.
One vote?
I don't even think we have to vote on it. Do we?
It needs to be signed by you, Mike.
I'll sign it.
Okay? So, there, so we can sign mine or yours, and I'll, I'll fill out the rest of it.
So, I'm definitely going now. If there's question, I'm gonna, I'm definitely going.
I didn't date it either, so...
Okay?
Okay. Dog warrant. I think that's the next one? Yep. Dog warrants, uh...
Yeah, it's really an addendum. Uh, we have found another dog that is not registered, and, uh, letters have gone to the, to this dog owner in an attempt, Joan has attempted to get this dog registered. And having the owner not made it to City Hall, we would, we're, she's requesting that the dog warrant be, uh, would have this addendum to add this owner to the list.
So, like signing a death warrant?
No, 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 no.
Then the officer goes to the door, and then they move.
Okay. Uh, and I think Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, the other dog warrant that you signed a few months ago, those are good.
Yep. They've gotten all those dogs.
We have an officer, uh, George Merkel delegates, I'm gonna call it delegated, and, and, uh, we actually make it into a little bit of a competition, to be honest with you, because Adam, uh, Jason Llet, uh, he, he was the person that this was delegated to a couple of years ago, and he bragged about how quickly he got them all licensed. And so, Adam, they, they, they make a game out of it, uh, as to how quickly they can get the list completed. So, those are all taken care of. This is, this, we believe this is the only unregistered dog in this...
No, we got three pending, but they're only on their second letter.
Okay.
They'll be coming to the board in...
So, we'll bring that.
September meeting.
Yeah.
Okay? So, that's taken care of. Uh, review, uh, watershed, recreation, reserve fund, policy...
Yeah, I think, Mike, in light of the time, I, I will just do that...
You wanna just wait until the next meeting?
We don't need to do anything with it.
We'll just, we'll just...
Carry it over.
Carry it over.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. And this, this next one, uh, city managers and city clerk's performance evaluation. Actually, I was gonna ask Randy to go into a, make a motion to go into executive session, but hold that motion. I have some information. I do need to talk to the council. Well, I guess the only way to do it is go into executive session.